Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order. It is 6:30 December, Thursday, December 16th. And I'd like to welcome everyone to the Village of Royal Palm Beach Council Meeting. Could everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Does this sound a little tinny to you? No? Does it? Yeah. I don't know if you can adjust the sound out here. Sounds a little weird to me, anyway. Maybe because it's December 16th. Maybe because it's the last council meeting for the year. I don't know. We'll move forward. Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And with that, we'll start out with reports. There was a Transportation Planning Agency meeting this morning. No significant actions were taken, other than we did appoint interim executive director, Valerie Nielsen, who was previously employed with the TPA as the planning director. So we'll see how that goes as we move forward. With that, there's one thing I'd like to bring up and see if I can get a consensus from the council. I believe all of you have had an opportunity to meet with the representatives for Track 115. Have you had a chance to meet with them? So I think you all know the story, the situation, that we have these four conditions on our property, none of which are favorable to something that they'd like to be able to do. What I'd like to ask for consensus on is that we consider modifying one of the conditions. That's the one that prohibits a drive-through. And Keith, we need you and your team to do some homework for us. What we'd like to be able to do is, if we remove that condition, put the restriction as they could have a drive-through as long as it's a coffee shop. Go ahead.
Wait, I'm sorry. But it already is zoned for a drive-through, correct? It just has to be a financial institution?
That's what I said, a drive-through for a coffee shop.
No, you didn't. Well, that's what you've said, but that's what the changes. So the question is, is now...
Change it so that we can have a drive-through, but you can only have it for a coffee shop.
Or the bank, so you're adding the additional to it?
Well, they don't want to...
Or you want to change it? I know they don't want to, but you want to change it from a bank to a coffee shop?
This is, let them come back and Keith, come back and tell us how it gets worked. But yeah.
Okay. And my concern is, though, what happens if, because we've had that particular coffee shop, look at other parcels in the village that have fallen through. So now we are pigeoning it to...
Well, we're kind of having a discussion that I wanted to have a...
Discussion.
On what would that item being an agenda item? And what the information from legal, that here's how we can structure that so that we protect ourselves. Now, I'll be honest, in the conversation I had at my meeting, I asked the question, was Starbucks still in play if they can get a drive-through for that location? And the indication I got was that they are still in play.
Well, we're still in play, but that doesn't matter.
Yeah, but, well, we're worried just in such a way. That's why Keith and your team can come back to us. And once you've gotten that straightened out, we'll make an, we agree, we're making an agenda item and we'll have a full discussion of that. Okay?
Yeah. And just to be clear, all we're doing is having the discussion. This isn't saying anything's going to happen.
This is saying that we're going to...
Selena is bringing up some concerns that I kind of share.
With the recommendation on how we could change the wording to protect us. That's what I'm asking for.
That, I'm in favor of that.
Okay.
And I'll represent it as an agenda item.
It'll be an agenda item.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Keith or...
No, sir. I understand what the council is directing. And we will, we will put some recommended, recommended language together for you to consider.
Ray, you got anything? You good? Okay. You have something else?
So just a question, or clarification. And so the language that you're looking for is to make it specific that it would be a coffee shop, not to broaden the uses, because another business that could use a drive-through.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So that if that does work...
Protect our...
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, good. With that, and Selena, we'll start with you.
Okay. Good evening. We had a busy few weeks, but thank you to the Habbat Jewish Center. They did a Hanukkah and menorah lighting ceremony for the village, or for residents again in the village and the area. So they do such a wonderful job over there. It was a family event. It was beautiful. So thank you very much for doing that. Young at Heart Met, so they had their monthly luncheon. This year's entertainment was a comedian. Who, you know, you never been on the first, you know, the first horse out of the gates doesn't do well. And that's the way he started, but he finished...
No, he did pretty good.
He was really good.
I don't think I could remember all of that information, that he just kept rattling off.
All this stuff. He was a cross between like Jackie Mason and Rodney Dangerfield and a lot of the other stuff. So they did a great job. They have another sold-out luncheon there. We attended the Winterfest and tree lighting event. So thank you very much to the staff and everyone who participated in that. It was another wonderful event. So many, go ahead.
By the way, we have gotten a lot of very positive feedback from our community about they really enjoyed the Winterfest. I think it was part of it because it's been two years since we had it. But I'm glad it was a nice, it was a nice event. Yes.
It was beautiful. And the fact that all the rides were free and there were so many activities, kid-friendly, family-friendly, so it was wonderful. And then we also did the holiday parade. So thank you very much to the Central Palm Beach County Chamber and Hispanic Chamber, as well as all the volunteers and everything. So they did another wonderful job with that. The school, Palm Beach County School is doing the school meal program. So they're offering 13 meal kits at 16 different locations. HL Johnson's one of them. But if you go to palmbeachschools.org, you can see the schools and the times. So they're providing schools during the winter break for families. Just a reminder, to please keep your dog on a leash through the village. That is a rule that we have. So do not let them run loose. It's easy when you think you have a well-mannered dog to let him go, but they always find a squirrel or something and take off. So please remember to keep him on a leash.
You want to comment on that, Ray? You and I have been talking about that. That we are going to step up enforcement?
Yes, our parks employees have been told to advise the people. They, we have a leash law. We do have, also have a warning form that we will, after a verbal warning, we'll give them a written warning. And after repeated written warnings, we can ban them from the park and arrest them if they're for trespassing, if they come back on the park.
Thank you. And remember, though, that that law does pertain to the entire village. So there are times where even you're walking down the street and there are...
But especially in Commons Park.
And everywhere within our 12 square miles. Upcoming events on tomorrow, we have a U2 Tribby Band playing over at Commons Park. And then Saturday, they're showing the Grinch movie. We do have a New Year's Eve event this year. So back to those things that we've skipped last year that we're getting to do. Concert and food trucks at Commons Park from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So it will be in early evening. And then starting in January, they're going to have concerts on the first and third Fridays at Commons Park. Todd Robner Park, there's a lot of construction going on there. They're replacing the fence, they're redoing the dog park, and they are building a kayak launch. And they are, the option to have the kayak rental, like we do at Commons Park, will be at Todd Robner as well. So once the launch is built, you can bring your own out there. And we're working on getting the rentals out there. Starting in January, we do have our senior events starting to slowly ramp back up. So January 10th, we're starting our senior program over at the Rec Center. So if you're 60 and over and want to sign up for the meal program, please call Shakira over there at (561) 753-1241. And that's the free program. And then they're slowly going to phase in our senior tech classes, our Luncheon Learns, our aerobics, all the other events over at the Rec Center. I would like to say congratulations to Captain Nyox, who actually is with us this afternoon, this evening. He was nominated and then invited to join the FBI National Academy. So he's going to Quantico, Virginia. So congratulations to you. That's a huge accomplishment and we're very proud of you. Noah Borges is, he's the gentleman who did his Eagle Scout project. And we did the flag retirement box in Veterans Park. So he actually did earn his Eagle Scout for doing that. And he was awarded that over the weekend. And along the lines of congratulations, our very own Shakira Thomas was featured on the cover of Art and Culture Magazine. So she's an amazing artist. So that was on the fall issue. And she's actually going to be the featured speaker at an artist lecture at the Cultural Council on January 15th. It's a free event. And you can go to palmbeachculture.com to register for that and have a safe and happy and healthy holiday. Selena, which Grinch movie is it? Pardon, which Grinch movie? It just said Grinch. So I'm going to go with, it didn't give me... Yeah.
The new one or the old one?
I'm hoping the old-fashioned. I'm a little old-fashioned one, so I do like that Grinch one. Yeah, that's good stuff.
The only, I guess I don't have a report. I just wanted to make sure everyone knows, on January 11th, because we won't have a meeting before then. If you live in the 20th District of Florida for a congressional race, we do have an election on January the 11th. So check where you are and make sure you know where to go to vote. It's important to get out and vote. And I don't think it was mentioned last time, but congratulations to the mayor and Councilwoman Semios for getting re-elected coming up in March. And that's it.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. So every year, we do Read for the Record. At least we have for the last eight years here in Royal Palm Beach. Turns out that it's been 14 years that the Literacy Coalition has done its Read for the Record, which is a national program, everybody reading the same book on the same day. It just happens to be that it was Councilwoman Kretuski's birthday, so it was an extra celebration this year.
Yay! I love to read.
And, and so, once again, we received an honorable mention for the Midsize City Competition, which is run jointly between the League of Cities and also the Literacy Coalition. And so I have the proof of our accomplishment here. And although Jan said, is it an honorable mention again? And I said, yes, but you have to understand where we came from. It's not like this was always that way. So we have moved up and will continue to move up, I'm sure. Actually, the numbers are really huge for this year. There were over 600 community leaders that read the book, which is called Amy Wu and the Patchwork Dragon, to over 29,000 kids at 212 sites throughout the county. So the reach was huge this year. And I think this thing just continues to grow every, every year. Hopefully, we'll actually beat, now let's see. The category, we should be able to handle this. The Village of Palm Springs is the one that won in our category. So we ought to be able to do something in that regard. So hang in there, keep reading, and there's always next year. Education Advisory Board meeting was this, this Monday. And HL Johnson Elementary School was showcased. This was the first time, actually, that we had a in-person performance. And oftentimes, at schools, when they're being showcased, we'll bring their students in to do a variety of things, whether it's STEM projects, or whether it's singing, or some kind of theater. Well, this, that time of year, so we had a chorus. Actually, the chorus was, was called "The Pentatonic Pride." Jaguar pride, I get that part. I had to look at pentatonic, and it turns out it has to do with a five-note scale, musical scale. So there you go. You can take that home with you, no extra charge this evening. There were 30 students who actually showed up. And of course, when the students show up, the parents show up. It was standing room only. That's the first time I've seen that in a year and a half or two years in here. And it was great to have them back. The piece, they did a number of pieces. And some were actually from the holiday program that they had done two nights before at Royal Palm Beach High School Auditorium. My favorite one was the famous Christmas song, "The Ugly Sweater."
I don't think I know that song.
One lyric that really stuck with me, "It's so ugly, it's beautiful." And they sang it over and over. It was hilarious. Anyway, the kids did a great job. They really did. Well, it turns out, this was the first time that Principal Amato Kretuski was able to actually present for HL Johnson. She hasn't been there quite a year yet. And so it was a milestone for her. And so she covered a lot of what's going on at the school, including their 789 students, a slight increase over last year. She talked about their scene program, their Cambridge programs. And she also talked about some of the challenges. And I think all of the schools have felt the impact of not being able to have kids in the classroom. And in one area that we hear over and over again that took the biggest hit is math. And so they have programs and initiatives that tailor to the individual kids' needs. And I'm sure they'll do a great job. Principal Amato is, has kind of an interesting background. Can't get much deeper roots than what she has at HL Johnson. She has a picture on her bookshelf of her as a child, standing with her mom in front of HL Johnson on her first day at kindergarten.
She went to kindergarten?
Yes. So that's a, that's a pretty, that's a pretty cool situation. And of course, she's really, really proud of that. And, and of course, she spent a lot of time over here at Royal Palm Beach High School as an assistant principal under Dr. Armaz. And he's done an amazing job over the years of preparing assistant principals to become principals. So we benefit from that. She stays here, and it's all part of the community. It's going to be, I think, a fantastic thing for that school. And, and it's going to be a great opportunity for, for her as well. One of the other principals that we actually got a chance to introduce the Education Advisory Board is our new high school principal, Michelle Fleming. And she brings a wealth of knowledge and experience as well. Nine years as an AP over at Palm Beach Gardens High School. One of the things that Dr. Armaz used to talk about was the similarity between those two schools. They're both Title I schools. They have challenges that are similar. And they have accomplishments and programs that are similar in a lot of respects. And one of the things that she brings is nine years of experience in that environment, along with some others very significant credentials, not to mention her enthusiasm and her energy, which I think is going to be fantastic for Royal Palm High School. So the last item I want to mention has to do with, at our last council meeting, the Education Advisory Board was asked to look into a concern that was expressed by one of our residents about the drop-off and pickup by parents at HL Johnson using the Hart Trail parking lot area. So I pass that along to our Education Advisory Board Chairman, Dr. Bill Talimer. He and I both went over there in the morning. And we watched what was taking place with cars going in and out of that parking lot. I think there were probably not more than six cars at any one time. And the traffic didn't seem to be all that heavy. But nevertheless, it was moving in and out of that parking lot. And, and the concern that was expressed was kids, that kids might be in danger walking up and down the sidewalk with those cars going in and out of the parking lot. So we set up a meeting with Principal Amato. And together, we came up with a plan, which she's taking the first steps on it. And that was to remind parents that they have a drive-through traffic flow process for both pickup and drop-off. And so she indicated she was going to express that, once again, through PTO, school media, and other ways. They do pay very close attention to that, because she was able to actually cite the length of time that it takes from the beginning of the drop-off, in particular, to the end, being between 32 and 34 minutes total. The whole idea is to see what they could do to make it more and more efficient. So the idea is to encourage the parents to utilize that, that traffic flow and to not utilize the parking lot area as, as they had been. She also prepared a sign to remind parents about that. And I think that sign's been posted. And then finally, she, she indicated that she would be reaching out to see if she could get some volunteers to help monitor the traffic at the parking area to make sure that if kids are walking along, they are safe and that they don't walk in front of a car, they don't sit in front of a car. Would not be a crossing guard kind of an activity. It'd be more like the volunteers that we have at Commons Park, directing traffic and that kind of thing. So she's headed in that direction. She said it's not likely that she'll get a volunteer before the beginning of the year. But hopefully, with the combination of those things, we'll be safeguarding the kids.
Good. So some, some action's been taken to try to address this. That's good.
Absolutely. That completes my report.
Thank you for that. Thank you for looking into it. Speaking of school, the school district is partnering with the Paper Education Company. And they're going to offer now, online, on-demand, 24/7 tutoring for all of our Palm Beach County students. It starts on January 4th. There's a link. Parents can go on and see a free tutorial. But the tutoring is free, too. And it'll go through the end of May as a, as a pilot. So if students need tutoring, they can catch that at any time in any subject.
What age, is there a limit on the age group?
Not, I don't think it is.
The news story, I think I partially saw, said sixth grade enough, but I wouldn't quote it because I just saw it briefly on the news as I was on my way out.
Yeah. Anyway, palmbeachschools.org. Yeah. And, and just, here we are again at the holidays, right? So happy holidays to everybody and safe holidays, and we'll see you next year.
Okay.
No report, Mayor. Thank you. No report, Mayor. Thank you.
I thought we were going to get an update on body-worn cameras.
They all here to do that? Yes.
You want, you want to do it another time?
No, no, you, no. I thought you were going to bring it up.
I thought you were going to bring it up.
Well, he's here, he's here to do it. So I do have a report, Mayor. I have Captain Nyox here. Nice to talk to you, Ray. Prepared to give a report on the status of the body-worn cameras.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I do have a report to give. As Manager indicated. Glad to do it. Glad to be here. Body-worn cameras. I know that quite some time...
See how important the subject is?
Okay. Okay. Is it good now? I know quite some time ago, Major Coleman was in here. He's on the body-worn camera team. Gave you guys an update of where we are, what we're doing. Since Major Coleman was in here and spoke to you guys, what they did was they, they started to develop a full-blown team and met with vendors. So in July of last year, and please keep in mind COVID has affected everything this as well. July of last year, they had the core team meet with two days, actually, two full days in the Farber Center with seven different vendors to go over what they had, what they had to offer, and what technology they had. After that, they created a request for Kierman RF Pay. And out of the seven vendors, five were responsive. Only five were able to meet the criteria that we had left for. After that, our body-worn camera team developed scenarios that they wanted to test these things in. Those five vendors were still able to do it. The vendors are now supplying us with the cameras, which we hope to have deployed in a test environment, testing out those scenarios this upcoming January. And we hope to have it implemented, hopefully, in 2021. What I'd like to remind the council and the public that might...
2020, 2022.
I'm sorry, 2022, yes. What I'd like to remind the public and the council is this is not just as easy as getting a GoPro and putting it on and walking around and filming everything. There's got to be a lot of policies and procedures, a lot of directives in this. Who gets them? When do they turn them on? And not only is this going to affect about 1,500 or 2,000 deputies, it's also going to affect about 1,000 cars. Because I, I don't know how familiar you are with body-worn cameras, but if you've ever seen some of the videos that show up on YouTube when police officers roll up to something, and all they have is merely a body-worn camera. So the police officer seeing something through his windshield, which could be a shooting, could be a violent offense, it could be anything. Okay? But the body-worn camera is picking up the steering wheel. So what the sheriff wants to do, so we have a full picture of everything that goes on, is not only introduce the body-worn camera system, but upgrade the car camera system, too. So you actually have a full picture of what's going on. When Sheriff Bradshaw does stuff, he tends to do it, you know, the right way the first time. And if it takes a little longer, that's what he's going to do, and that's what he chose to do in this place. So like I said, when you move up, what we want to see is what the officer actually sees. And also, there's got to be things developed. So if a deputy steps out and his camera turns on, will it automatically communicate with the other deputy that's there and the other deputy there? So we have it. So there's a lot of nuts and bolts to move through. We are moving forward with an agency this size. It's not as quickly implemented as with someone that has maybe 30 or 40 deputies. We have different divisions, different units. But they are moving forward as best as they possibly can with it. And that, that's pretty much where we're at.
Well, thank you so much for that update. Any questions for members on council?
I do have a question. Is, is there a particular police department that's modeled this and actually has done the full set?
There are many out there. And that, that's actually what the beginning of the process was. Benchmarking with those that already had it and had it for a while and was successful. Find out what they were using, what policies and procedures they had, and then how would they work for us, what those were. So I couldn't tell you because I'm not on the core team. But I know there had to be others throughout the country because there are other small agencies that have had them.
Okay, thank you.
Captain, thank you so much for the update. It sounds like a lot of progress has been made. And we look forward to next year as we get through the testing phase and raw phase. This is an important topic, certainly. I just wanted to get an update because we haven't, I guess it was over a year ago, because it was during our budget cycle that we had the presentation. So I appreciate the update.
And I'm sorry not to be long with it. Just to remind the public, too, that there's a lot of stuff involved in this behind the scenes. Like if we go to a crime and there's children involved, someone has to put the video now, someone has to go through and redact it and remove those children and cover their faces. Marcy's Law comes into play now, too, with identification of victims. And, you know, release to that to the public. So it's not just as easy like I started with, is putting on a GoPro, moving forward and giving it to everybody.
Certainly understand it takes time if you want to do it right and it sounds like you guys are doing it right.
That's how Sheriff Bradshaw does it. So thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the update, Ray.
You did have a report after all.
Okay. I think, Keith, you said you had nothing, right?
Right.
Okay.
Still?
I think, I think that concludes the reports. At this time, does anyone have a petition they'd like to present to the council? Seeing none, then I'm closing the floor to petitions. Diane, regarding statements from the public, do we have any advance statements on non-agenda items or consent agenda? No? Ray, do you have anyone out there with their hand raised on a non-agenda item or a consent agenda item?
No, I do not, Mayor.
Okay. I do have comment cards. Ding 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 ding. The first comment card we have is on a non-agenda item. Mr. Gary Hines, would you like to come up and speak to us?
Okay. For the record, Gary Hines, 149 Kingsway, Crestwood subdivision of Royal Palm Beach. I suppose there are occasions when people come to these mics with complaints. This is not one of those occasions. To the contrary, I just felt compelled to come tonight with a very long overdue thank you. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. Liggins. My wife and I were both, are both West Palm Beach natives. We moved out here 21 years ago. We love the Village of Royal Palm Beach. We think it's one of the nicest communities in Palm Beach County. And Captain and deputies, it's one of the safest communities in Palm Beach County. So thank you for your service. But in, in my line of work, I get to meet with a lot of city councils and work directly one-on-one with the city managers. Your manager is one of the best in Palm Beach County. And I hope I don't embarrass him by saying that, but I know firsthand, working with him through the years. And I say that on behalf of our CEO, Kelly Smallridge, and our B2B team. Again, it's been a few years. I wish we could find another Ollie, but we're the ones that recruited all of you.
You got another one up your sleeve? Tell us about it.
We keep looking. But just want to thank you again. I'm sorry for the delay. It's taken us a long to come before the council. Thank you. But it is a great community. We enjoy living here. So in closing, I wish you all a happy, safe, and blessed holiday.
Sure, and the same to you. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Mayor?
Yes?
I do have one resident...
Raise your hand?
Business owner. Well, the hand isn't raised, but it's a question. They, they marked the question box. And their comment is, "I would like to speak for a couple of minutes about the difference between the IL zoning for Palm Beach County and the Village." It's Jeff Feldman. Jeff Feldman would like to speak for a couple of minutes about the difference between IL zoning for Palm Beach County and the Village. That's what he would like to do.
Okay.
Under public comment.
On non-agenda items.
On non-agenda items. That is correct.
Let, let him speak.
Let me unmute him, and he will have to unmute himself. I unmuted him. He is self-muted, but if, once he unmutes himself, he can speak. He's unmuted. Self-muted and muted by anyone. Mr. Feldman, see if you can unmute yourself. Mr. Feldman, I'm showing you self-mute, that you're, there you go. Your, your speaker is on green. You can speak now. We should be able to hear him. He's not muted.
Could be a volume issue, yeah.
We are not able to hear you. If you're able to raise the volume on your phone or your receiver. Well, I'll tell you what, I will paraphrase what I think he's gonna say. Um, he and if he wants to come to our January meeting, he's more than welcome, obviously, to come to our January and speak there.
Yes, he is.
My understanding is that our IL zoning district for some of the uses he's interested in doing on his property uh requires a special exception, which which can have conditions put on by council and go through the uh TSR. What he was what he was wanting to talk about is how Palm Beach County zoning district does not have that same special exception requirement that we have as it relates to some of the uses he wants to use his property for. And that's what he wanted to talk to you about.
Okay. The county is the county and the village is the village.
Yeah, staff would not recommend changing our our code as it relates to special exception and the way we deal with our IL district. But he had his reasons for for wanting that change. And I invite him to the next meeting to speak under public comment.
Yes, sir. Uh, our next meeting will be what, January sixteenth? Twentieth, okay. January twentieth, which is the third Thursday in January in twenty twenty-two. So uh, we really would welcome you to come here and and um discuss your your question with us at that time. Thank you. Okay? Probably had a technical difficulty, but okay. Any other hands raised?
No, Mayor.
All right. Um, all right, then I'm gonna, right now, then I'm gonna close public comment on non-agenda items and items on the consent agenda. And with that, Diane, can you give us the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Two, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the First Amendment and consent to assignment of professional auditing services agreement in order to assign the current agreement with Callard, Danton, Levine, Cohen, Porter and Bell PA to Markham LLP in accordance with paragraph sixteen of the agreement. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the first addendum to the food and beverage services agreement with Seeds Cafe LLC to postpone the commencement date of the agreement in response to COVID nineteen to September first, twenty twenty-one. Four, Public Works is requesting ratification of an emergency procurement for the repair of the embankment at the pedestrian bridge on Royal Palm Beach Boulevard. The work was procured and completed as an emergency procurement in accordance with section ten dash ninety-eight B of the Village Code. The Village received estimate number five zero two three from Wen and Sons Environmental Construction Company Incorporated, piggybacking their Palm Beach County contract in the amount of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars with funding from CIP PW one eight zero six Bridge Slope Stabilization. Five, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the second addendum to the professional services agreement for urban forestry services in order to extend the agreement for the second and final renewal period ending January first, twenty twenty-three. Six, approval of a special event permit for pet supplies plus to hold a pet wellness event located at one one zero five one Southern Boulevard, Suite one sixty and situated within the Southern Palms Crossing Shopping Center on Saturday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-two from nine AM until six PM. Seven, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund three oh one in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars from undesignated fund balance three nine nine zero one zero zero to Commons Park Pathway Lighting PR one nine zero three. Eight, approval of the bid award in the amount of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract with the lowest response of responsible bidder for the Commons Park Pathway Lighting PR one nine zero three project to Jericho Traffic Controls Incorporated. Nine, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute change order number five for license plate reader camera installation EN two one oh six project with ER Tech Systems Group Incorporated doing business as Broadcast Systems. The cost for the said services shall not exceed ninety-two thousand, ten dollars and eighteen cents and funds will come from project EN two one zero six License Plate Reader Camera Installation. Ten, approval and authorization to modify college tuition reimbursement policy to allow part-time employees of the Village of Royal Palm Beach to apply for tuition reimbursement benefits. Eleven, approval and authorization for the village manager to facilitate a change order to the agreement with Apicurian Park LLC doing business as Next Era Services for roadway grounds maintenance service to modify the scope of work to add as other services the additional maintenance area of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard from Mokachobee Boulevard to Fortieth Street. The change order includes increased costs for fiscal year twenty twenty-two in the amount of seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. Twelve, adoption of resolution number twenty-one twenty-two joining with the state of Florida and other local government units as a participant in the Florida memorandum of in understanding and formal agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute the Florida memorandum memorandum of of understanding and any additional settlements obtained related to the opioid litigation.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, is anyone who wants to pull an item?
I do. May I pull item number two and number twelve, please?
Two and twelve. Anyone else? Okay. Um, if there's no other questions or comments or items to be pulled, I'll look for uh motion to approve the consent agenda item minus item two and item twelve.
So move. Second.
Is that your second?
Could have been.
We have a motion and a second on favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, Diane, please let the record show the consent agenda items. Were approved with the absence of item two and twelve.
I I would like to invite uh Mr. Hawkman to the podium.
Wow, he this, how do you even do that? Go ahead. Is that, yeah, okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Before I introduce Mr. Reason from Markham LLP, I would like to publicly talk about Mark Vale for the twenty years that he's been with the Village and what he has done to make the transition. This change, so simple and so seamless. He worked with the Eisner Ampers.
It's the ghost. Good morning.
He worked with Eisner, he worked with Eisner to make sure that the audit staff currently in place, that the audit will continue under Mark. And he worked with Mark. Actually, he worked with Eisner also to find the new firm that the village is dealing with. And Mark, who I know for years two more than fifty was the boss. He's a boss. He's a boss. Because he wound up getting very cool is willing to just take the contract we have and go with the general. So that being said, I would like to introduce Mr. Paul Reason, partner from Markham.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and his council members and meeting attendees. My name is Mo and I'm with the firm of Markham. And I want to first thank you for giving us the opportunity. I know you have the light on on the microphone.
No. Um, hey, sorry.
You got to start over. I'm joking, I'm joking, you'll have to start over.
So, yeah, so I'm with the firm of Markham and we specialize in government audits. We service about just under fifty government entities in the state of Florida. And uh, we work closely with um Mark Vale and his CPA firm um for the transition. We know that you have lots of options when it comes to audit services. So prior to today's meeting, we shared a little bit history of our firm and um our firm profile, resume. And as Mr. Stan mentioned, the nucleus of the audit team that you're accustomed to stays intact. So it's all gonna be the same team. There's no additional burden on the village and um extra efforts. Um, it is gonna be a different letterhead um because it's a different firm. But other than that, the contract terms, the fees and the timeline, we're strongly committed to making sure that we meet or exceed that. Open it up to any questions you may have.
Any questions, members of council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, item twelve.
Will you want to approve this one first?
We could do them both.
Okay. Item twelve is, I would just, um, and I think the village attorney can help us with that, just for a clarification of exactly what this means and thanks.
So um I'm sure you're all, I don't know, at the end of the day, this this will bring um this will hopefully bring some money into the village related to the national opioid litigation. Um, there's a settlement that's being structured with many states, including the state of Florida. It creates a number of pots of money, a state level pot, a county level pot, and then there's a a a third pot that local governments may be able to share in as well. This is a, this number is an estimate right now, i- if everything happens the way it needs to happen and the village is is could potentially um receive just under a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in in settlement proceeds. Now, that's spread out over eighteen years. It's 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 a long time. So so one of the threshold things that has to happen in order for this settlement to to um be successful is um a a a critical mass of municipal residents has to be has to have signed on to want to participate in the settlement. The way that that is done is through municipalities signing the MOU that is on your agenda and the resolution. And one of the interesting little pieces of this is you have to be a municipality with more than ten thousand residents to even be able to qualify to sign the MOU. The cities that are smaller than that, they can sign a participation agreement, say that they want to participate and be able to obtain some of the, you know, funds on on a pro rata share that that they might be able to get. But their numbers do not count towards obtaining that critical mass. So there's a lot of, there's there's some confusion out there still, but one of the according to the information on the Attorney General, the Florida Attorney General's page regarding all of this settlement, the determination of critical mass deadline was January second. So, you know, the League of Cities was told a different date that was in February. Very, yeah, it's it's kind of clear as mud. But in an abundance of caution, we wanted to put this on your agenda to give you the opportunity to meet the January deadline in the event that that is actually accurate. So by by approving the resolution and signing the MOU, the village would count towards obtaining the uh critical mass of municipalities in Palm Beach County. Critical mass is fifty percent plus one of the municipal residents. So this would allow you to participate in that. And um assuming that happens and everything else falls into place and the settlement actually gets signed off, the village would then receive those funds over that period of time. The funds obviously can't just go into your general fund to be used however you want. There are um, there are
Strings?
Strings, it has to be used for, and now I will say that the, you know, the um the list of things is pages long. It it's truly, there are so many different things it can be used for. So I I I would be of the opinion that in a village like Royal Palm Beach, we have no problem finding a way to spend money correctly. So that is what this is, that that's why it's before you tonight. This has really started rolling downhill pretty quickly in the last month or so in terms of deadlines and and all of this. So that is what it is.
And just, okay, so it's a national um litigation. It's not anything where residents that we had were affected by it. It's not that we had um pill mills in our area that it was, it's not based on that, correct?
Well, the the litigation is at at a national level, states are are the entities that are suing pharmaceutical companies. We are considered a non-litigation municipality. We have not filed our own lawsuit. And that is, that is also uh one of the features. In order to sign off on the MOU, you would have to be a municipality that you do not have your own lawsuit. And you're saying you're not gonna file your own lawsuit, rather you want to participate in the settlement at at the with this litigation that is being handled by the states.
Okay, and then you had said that it was residents that need to sign?
Well, no, the municipalities need to sign off.
Sign just this, okay.
But it's on behalf of their residents. And it's only the municipalities that have a population of greater than ten thousand that are eligible to be counted towards attaining that critical mass of fifty percent of the municipal residents in the county.
So it's not as those, uh, residents don't need to come to us and say, oh, I was prescribed this?
The action would be to approve the resolution and authorize the mayor to sign the MOU and that gets Royal Palm Beach.
What they need to do, just, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for members on council?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number two and twelve.
We have a motion, second.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda items two and twelve were approved by them. Okay, that moves us to our regular agenda items. Agenda item R one is an initial consideration by the village council of a proposed conveyance of village-owned property by applicants one, Paint Lux LLC and two, Kaiser University. Ray, you down for this?
Yes. Mayor, as you pointed out, this is a consideration by village council of a proposed conveyance of property owned by the village adjacent to to uh Paint Lux and Kaiser University. As you remember, some years ago, we passed an ordinance that if we have a surplus piece of property adjacent business, uh can purchase it under some certain got criteria um to expand their business. The uh, in this particular case, we have two adjacent property owners requesting to purchase the piece of property. The property is on Camille, on Seminole Palms Drive. It's a vacant piece of property next to the old Ideal School that's been recently purchased by Kaiser University that's gonna be looking to open that up as a a preschool. The other Jason property owner is Paint Lux. Uh, they've been there there in with their business more than more than eight years. I think over eight years as a paint and body shop. And they were also wanting to purchase it to uh expand their parking. This is under the ordinance, it's it's it, the first step of it is, do you even want to sell it? If the answer is yes, then in this case, since we have both property owners wanting to buy it, you'd have to pick one. And then we would move with that property owner and getting appraisals and and uh going towards closing. So that's what we have on the table and um council's consideration.
Okay. Before we take.
And we do have Paint Lux here.
Yeah.
And we also have um the the legal representative for Kaiser University uh on the online.
All right. Why don't we give them uh Angel and Corey Gibson? Let them speak first and then we'll hear from Kaiser University.
Uh, good evening, council members, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Angel Gibson, this is my husband Corey Gibson. Um, we own Paint Lux Auto Body. We started our company in two thousand and twelve and uh we have been leasing our current space for many years. We acquired, we purchased our suite in December twenty twenty. So Corey and I are the face of our company, we're there on a daily basis and uh we are the definition of the American dream. Our collision center serves our local community with our ultimate goal of offering the best quality and service to all. Our collision center serves our local community with our ultimate goal of offering the best quality and service to all of our customers. There are very few family-owned body shops in Royal Palm and there are actually none in our immediate area. So we run a very clean, well-organized facility. Our current space has been a body shop since 1983. Resolutions have been passed in the early 90s to allow our space to exist. So I know that we do not have the same resources as Kaiser. However, we are a small local business that would like to better serve our community and selling us that adjacent property will give us an opportunity to do that. As you are aware, there are more cars on the road now more than ever before. The traffic in our area is continuing to increase and more people are beginning to move to our beautiful community. With that being said, we are busier than ever and we do not have adequate space to keep vehicles safe and secure while they are being repaired. Also, there is currently an automotive industry shortage, which could go on for several years. Due to this, we have an increase of families repairing their vehicles instead of going out and purchasing new ones. And lastly, we service the largest fleet account in the state of Florida, Palm Beach Sheriff's Department. We've had a contract with them for seven years now and we need a secure area to store their vehicles during repairs. Selling us that adjacent property will allow us to repair deputy vehicles to get them safely on the road to continue to protect our community. We thank you for your time and consideration.
I have a question. Any of you have questions yet? I'll let you go first. Exactly what are you going to do with this property? You're going to use it for parking, to park cars there?
Yes, we would like to make it a secure, well-lit.
Like a storage area?
Secure, well-lit parking area with security footage, hedges, fence to, to keep our vehicles safe and secure.
Now, if you didn't acquire this particular piece of land, do you have any other options to accommodate your parking expansion?
No, we do not.
Have you looked at any other options?
Honestly, we have built an amazing customer base and are really happy where we are.
I don't mean about you moving your, your business. I'm talking about, it sounds like you need more, a place to put cars. That's, that's what I'm saying. So, you don't necessarily have to have adjoining, I don't know. But I'm asking, did you look at other places to keep cars, not to move your business?
Not necessarily. The land is empty and this was an opportunity that we thought was perfect since it is adjacent to us. And logistically, the majority of our customers necessarily wouldn't want their vehicles leaving the facility to be housed elsewhere. So for logistic purposes, it's ideal.
So what do you do now to help to, to secure cars?
So we are doing our absolute best to secure them with what we have and we're having to intake less and less inventory and schedule it much further out.
So, okay, I'll go. And thank you very much because I appreciate your story and I completely understand where you're going with it. My only hesitation is if I envision what you want to do with it. It's fencing that empty parcel. The cars are behind it. It needs to be well-lit, which will bring attention to that section there. I think it's, from an aesthetic standpoint, is what I'm kind of trying to figure out. You know, how high can the fence be, the shrubs, so that you don't see it as, because right now, I don't want to think of it as, you know, the used car lot with all the cars on and stuff, that's.
Certainly, yes, so we would definitely ensure that. And I don't know if you've ever been near our facility.
I have, yeah. Because my mechanic's on the road.
Yeah, so everyone that walks in is like, wow, I feel like I'm in a doctor's office because we, we really take pride in our work and what we do and it's a very clean, well-organized place. So that would be first and foremost, is to ensure that it doesn't necessarily look aesthetically out of place.
Right.
The idea would be over off Landstein Lane where they got the, like, I believe boats and similar to that idea, that you guys lease that to these individuals.
So it does have that, that we do have our storage area?
It's going to be similar to that with the gates and, you know, so it looks nice. People can't see, there's a couple of lights over there, there's security cameras.
Okay.
Similar, something like that.
Something similar that we have on our property, so our RV lot, boat lot, gotcha.
Correct. That's the idea.
Any other questions?
No, I'd like to hear from Kaiser.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ray, is Kaiser on board to make?
Yes.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you, mayor, vice mayor, councilwomen and councilmen, Mr. Davis and staff, Mr. Liggins. I appreciate the opportunity. I would much rather prefer to be there with you in person, but unfortunately, I have to attend virtually. So just thank you again for this opportunity. My name is Andrea Kaiser. I represent Artemis Investments, who's the property owner. I represent Southeastern College and I represent Kaiser University. And we're very, very excited to take over the Ideal School and continue the preschool operation. As you're aware, there, or may not be aware, there is a daycare shortage in the country. Over 50% of families don't have access to childcare. And we understand that the Ideal School was a pivotal school in your community and we wanted to continue the operations of the preschool. We actually, because of our, you know, Kaiser University's 40-year experience in workforce training, we actually wanted to take it a step further and really engage in this exciting new collaboration between the university and the preschool. We've teamed up Southeastern College and Primo Schools. Primo School is the preschool brand we'll be using. They're an accredited, first of its kind accredited preschool. They've been around for more than 40 years, just like us. They have research-based education and their students outperform their peers on all levels. There's a quality education, research-based curriculum for, toward zero to five. And because there's a shortage of workforce in the early learning industry, we decided to team up with the university to create an early childhood development program. So the preschool is going to be located at the 400 building of the Ideal School and the university is going to be located at the 300 building of the Ideal School, where that was once a middle school. And we're going to locate as a satellite campus on an early childhood development program and a nursing program. And our students in the early childhood development program, they're going to go over to the preschool and get hands-on training because we believe in, you know, not only having the academic curriculum, but also the hands-on training to go with, to really round out the student's educational experience and provide them an externship program. We would like to purchase the adjacent property to also use it. Since you're not going to have students being dropped off, we're going to have preschoolers whose parents are going to park and walk them in and you won't have any stacking or flow issues because they don't arrive at all at school. School doesn't start at the same time for all the preschoolers. Parents arrive at different times, but regardless, there'll be no stacking, no flow because they have to park their cars and walk their children in, safer pickup. But now the 300 building is going to be a university, college, college education student and they're going to need transportation and a place to park their vehicles when they attend school. So we wanted to purchase that adjacent lot, make it as well an extension of our already existing parking lot on the west side of the 300 building. We want to landscape it, we want to beautify it, make it look like it's incorporated into our development. We, our use only requires parking during working hours from 7:00 to 6:00. There'll be no nighttime parking or overnight parking, so it doesn't warrant the lights or the security cameras or the fences that the other applicants proposed. And we want to congratulate the, the, the other applicants. They became, went from renters to owners, their family business, where we were big supporters of that. We really congratulate them. However, when you're weighing your decision this evening, just keep in mind that your criteria under your code of ordinances is to make a decision that's in the best interest of the citizens, citizens of the community. And we just ask that you weigh the need to serve our families in your city just a little bit more. The Ideal School really left a hole there. We'd like to continue that operation, to continue serving families and also meet the need for childcare shortage in our community. So thank you very much and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Just a point of clarification. So, you, you're going to increase the number of children that you're going to be able to accommodate? But this particular portion, parcel of land will be used for parking?
So in the 400 building, we're only allowed to accommodate whatever number of children that childcare licensing will allow in our facility. In the 300 building, we're going to be inviting college students who are those students, as opposed to what they were previously, middle schoolers. These students are going to have transportation, their own transportation, will need more parking.
I'm, I'm still not clear. You're going to build a parking lot on this land?
We would like to extend it, as extend the existing parking area on the west side of our building. So extend it for additional parking spaces and then, you know, pave it and landscape it and beautify it so it looks like part of our development.
All right, so this, the property would not be used to actually build classroom space for children?
Not at this time. It could definitely be a future use if that, if our program is so successful that we wanted to expand. We could do that at a later date, but for right now, we anticipate, now that we're going to have college students coming on campus after we get the preschool up and operating, we anticipate we're going to have more parking needs.
Well, this might be Bradford's question.
Bradford, you on? Bradford on?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Hey Bradford, I'm sorry I didn't ask you this before, but between the parking that the Ideal School currently has and the parking that the Charter School is utilizing because they're leaving, is that sufficient amount of parking or can that overflow go and, and use what the Charter School parking is using?
Do I understand the question, are they currently parked appropriately?
No, I'm asking is how many parking spaces are currently being utilized by the Ideal School, by the two portions, the elementary school and the middle school? And then how much parking is being used by the Charter School? Because the Charter School is leaving, so they have parking spaces that their staff and, and parents were using. So between the three different areas, is that sufficient parking or can that all be used for parking for Kaiser?
It is, it all can be used for Kaiser. They're, they're going to occupy space that was previously occupied by the school.
Okay, and then your estimate, I wouldn't hold you to it, even though it's on the record, how many parking spaces can you put in that vacant lot?
Jeez. I could not.
Good answer.
Well, okay, so he doesn't know the answer to that. I, I do know that the site plans that we've approved out there all do meet our code. The Ideal School, their expansion, they did meet our code and I don't remember them ever getting any variances. So, the current uses that are out there did meet our code. I think what we, what we heard from both of the people requesting it is, is their need because of their business plan of additional parking above and beyond our code. And Kaiser's was, you know, they're bringing, they're bringing the university in the building 300 where they're going to have the university students have hands-on training with the, with, with the preschool. And, and the Paint Luxe was wanting to use it for, for the storage of vehicles, either I guess coming to get worked on or being finished.
Okay, so from Kaiser, if you did not have this parking area, what would it mean to your program?
It would mean that we would not be able to enroll and serve as many university students. We wouldn't be able to maximize the number of university students that we can enroll.
Could you, can you put a number on that?
Sure. Our initial, our initial estimates were...
She went dark.
Hello? Are you there?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hi there.
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize. So for our initial year, we wanted to enroll approximately 200 students? 150 to 200 students?
All right. I'm trying to figure out, is there delta, what you can do now? But if you get this, this space, you can, how many more students you, you will be able to enroll? That's what I was trying to determine.
Okay. Yeah, so as I was mentioning earlier, don't forget that the, the 300 building was used for middle school students. So those students didn't require any parking spaces. But now that you're going to have adult students at this campus, anywhere from 150 to 200 adult students, now you're, you're going to need additional parking for all those adult students who are going to be using their own means of transportation. Now, all classes don't occur at the same time. Classes occur in different segments of the day, so all 200 spaces aren't going to be required at the same time. However, you know, when, you know, the first phase of this process is to get the preschool up and running. The second phase was to go in, to appear before you again and we have to change the use from a middle school to university. So we're, we're in the middle of the site plan, planning phases and we've already noticed that we're going to be deficient on parking. And that's why this opportunity was very appealing to us because when we saw the number of, when we changed the use and we saw the number of students we wanted to enroll, we noticed that parking was going to be deficient. And then I'll also add one, one more thing to that. And that is, is we are currently working with Palm Beach County Health Department's Childcare Licensing. And they require for our, first of all, if we were licensed for our maximum capacity, which is 206 students, our playground would not be big enough. And the infant playground has to be directly accessible from our classroom. So what does that mean? That means that our current playground isn't sufficient for our students and we would actually have to expand our playground, which means we're going to eat up more parking spaces on the east side of the property, on the east side of the 400 building. So we're actually going to be losing parking spaces. So that's, again, that's why the adjacent property was so important to us so we can operate and really use the maximum potential of both the university and the preschool.
I think I can answer, plus or minus, the question that was asked earlier about how many parking places. I think the property is about an acre, so you should be able to get landscaping and our, meeting our code, you should be able to get about 400, about 100 spots in there.
Really?
Yeah, at a minimum, a maximum, you would get a spot every 350 square feet. With the landscaping requirements and all that, you're going to, you're going to lose a little bit. So it'd be about one, one spot for every 400 square feet.
Since both uses involve cars being parked there, can we split the baby?
I don't thi, oh, I would think because of security purposes overnight.
Well, no, they could, if we split the property, they could accommodate that. They'd just enclose their part of the property and lock it up like they were going to do before.
Well, the other thing I was just thinking, I don't know if we know how much, I had it before, but because that, before the Charter School was there, it was a grocery store. So there's ample parking in that area.
We're talking about the same?
The Western Academies.
She's talking about the Western Academy.
The Western Academies, right, so they're leaving, but that used to be a grocery store, so they have all that parking.
But we shouldn't get involved in discussing the Western Academy property because we don't know what's going to happen with that and somebody else is probably going to move in there.
But I'm saying.
That should be part of this conversation.
But there's all that parking there.
I understand that, but I'm saying that shouldn't be part of this, this discussion tonight because we don't know what's going to happen with the Western Academy.
Well, we, we don't, but there's, there's quite a bit of parking there as well.
I understand it. There's a lot of things that might happen there. But my question is, if, if we split the property, that's, it sounds like 50 cars for each, they could secure it to the same extent that they were secure if they had the entire property. So it's, it's, you know, it's a half a bag, but it's better than nothing. Can you have that, I don't know who you would have talked in more detail with both Kaiser and, and the, what do you think? I mean, comments on?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's worthwhile consideration. I mean, both would be able to expand, which is what they're trying to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, the, the uses as defined, as I understand, aren't that dramatically different. One is a more secure parking area and one is a less secure parking area. So, I don't know, that's just my thought on it. Go ahead, Richard.
My thought, I guess, this is for Keith. We own a piece of property and it is what it is. Don't we have to go through some kind of process to change it from one piece of property to two pieces of property if we'd want to go split the baby round?
The process, but it's not impossible to do. If, if, if the.
Keith can do this.
If the buyers are interested in purchasing and then you'd have to figure out how to divide it in terms of their access and what, what the.
divide it in terms of their access and what, what, uh, and then, but they're not, they're not, it's not an insurmountable exercise.
Okay, so it's some, ba-, basically, my question was, this is something that could be done, that wouldn't, you know, I don't know, I haven't heard any exigencies from anybody, um, that we need to buy X, Y, or Z date, and we know it could take a while, but it's not something that's gonna take, what, eight to 10 months, or a year to?
It, it could. What you're talk-, what you're talking about, we can, we don't regulate ownership, we just happen to own this piece of property, so we can sell any little, we could sell a square foot if we wanted to. So it's what we would recognize for development. Um, if we were to s- split it and, and come up with an agreement of what portion one would buy and what portion the other would buy, they would have to replat those properties in, in their development when they're looking to, to get their approvals.
They'd have to do that anyway.
Well, not necessarily. If it was a standalone piece of property of record that already existed, platted record, a lot of record that already existed, they wouldn't have to platter to split it, and then to develop it, it would, it would have to be platted.
I, I understand what you're saying, and it's out of the box. Um, but the other thing is then, if Mrs. Kaiser said that they need 200 spaces, 50 is gonna be a drop in the bucket for what they need, and then are we gonna come through this issue? No?
She didn't say any 200 spaces. Regardless of what she says she needed, if, if we can only put 100 spaces in there-
Well, she said 200 students.
200 students, right.
That would come at different times.
Yeah.
So you don't need all 200 at one time.
Yeah.
No, but I don't think that's what they want to do in that.
Yeah, but the point is, he, he, here's the, here's the point, I guess, uh, I wanna create a win-win here. I wanna create a win-loose, alright, where one gets it all and the others out completely. I think, well, it'll be a win-win if we can get everybody to agree that, you know, half of this loaf would be better than none of the loaf, and we could satisfy two needs here. So, I saw them shaking their head saying, well, okay, I mean-
Taking a look at?
Okay. Andrea, are you there?
I am, I am here.
Are you receptive to what we're discussing?
I, I'm happy to talk to my client about it.
Okay, please do. Thank you.
I wanted to, uh, question Ray about the, the parking spaces. I know, you know, there's a difference between going to the parking space at like Publix or, you know, the Charter School. Um, what the Auto Lux is, I'm thinking, you know, at least the, and it could be a different thing, but when I've seen body shop auto yards, it seems to me they could pack a lot more cars in there than, you know, regular parking spots that I see at like, uh, uh, a Publix. Is that, am I wrong in that, or I just don't understand?
That's a whole other consideration. So, for the, for the use of this property as a parking lot, it would require, uh, a land use and a zoning change for both of them to do. Um, but the, the, the body shop, um, it's a legal non-conforming use now, so we're gonna, that, that would include, uh, council changing the, the use of the IL district to allow paint and body shops. Uh, it doesn't now, and it doesn't, and it, and it's storages is, is, is not allowed now. So you would have to, you would have to take that into consideration. The parking for the school is a legal use now. Um, it would be allowed as part of their school, but indeed, it wouldn't, it'd be, we would have to deal with the body paint shop in the district that it's in now, and it would have to, we either have to move it, change the, the industrial zone to, I think, general industrial, or we'd have to do a, um, a code amendment to allow paint and body in the, in the limited industrial district that they're in now.
So the impact of that is time, money?
Oh, yes.
So it would add time to the process, kind of what Richard was saying earlier. And so if we're some idea of what the impact would be, then maybe that would be a next step for both, uh, organizations, take a look at it. I don't understand, they could decide whether or not that looked feasible to them. Is that a reasonable approach?
I, what do you think, Keith?
I'm making an assumption based on the flow of the discussion that the village council is-
Based on the information available.
Is interested in selling this parcel, um, and possibly selling it to, dividing it and selling half to one and half to the other. So, yeah, I think, making that assumption, the next step would be to get, um, I think we'd probably have to discuss with each of the, um, both Kaiser and Paint Lux, what the actual process would be in terms of, of purchasing half of it, as the manager said, and what, what's gonna be involved from the land use side. If they're interested in purchasing that, then, then that would come back to you for further consideration, because then you still have to go through, we'd have to figure out how to do the appraisals, and, um, instead of one piece, you're talking about cutting it in half, and you'd have to appraise each, each piece once you figure out how to divide it. Um, so there, there will be some logistics, but, um, I think step one, after the council has decided, yes, we're interested in selling, is seeing if the buyers are interested in both buying half and if it can actually be done. Well, and I think, I think the first step is for the two, the two interested parties to get together and see how they would wanna split it, and what, what piece they would be most interested in buying, and then, and then, then we, then we'd have to go from there.
Is that agreeable, Angela?
I'm happy to reach out to, I'll, I'll go ahead and reach out to the neighbors. Sorry.
Go ahead, speak.
I, I was just gonna say, I'm happy to reach out to the neighbors.
Okay, so you guys will have some conversation, and then you can come back to us and says, okay, here's how you'd like to split the baby, and then we could proceed with a process at that point? Alright, so what do we have to do? I, we have a, go ahead, Richard.
My, my suggestion was going to be to, as the attorney indicated, I mean, this, it seems that this, this is, since it's a surplus property, it didn't seem like anyone had an issue about selling it. It's just how or, or why. And at this point, there are things that have to be resolved. So as the manager said, I mean, there's gonna have to be, you know, discussions between the two parties involved. So can we put this off to the next month and, and say, okay, we're looking forward to it? Because if they get into a discussion, we, we don't know what that'll be. So we could be in a different, if they both come back and say, okay, we both want half, and maybe then we'll know, because it, it's kinda tough, I understand, for both parties to say, okay, this is what's being proposed, but they, they don't really know. They have to-
Where we are right now, where we are right now, they've agreed that they will talk to each other and then come back to us. Okay, here's how we work it out.
Tonight's vote, tonight's vote of the council is, will you even sell it?
That's the question.
And if, if the answer is yes, you will sell, and, and, and you said yes, you'll sell with some considerations, the consideration is, well, both want it, so both can buy it. Now you two figure out what you wanna buy, and then we'll, we'll get back to you. But none of that stuff is necessary for them to own it. It's only, the steps are necessary to develop it and to use it.
Correct.
And each, and, and, and the, each user has it, will have a different set of steps.
That's correct.
Okay, so real quick for clarification, then, we'll, what we're voting on, or are we voting tonight and that is to sell the property?
That we're interested in.
Okay, so can we put a, a, uh, in addition to that, that we're interested in selling it to either Paint Lux or Kaiser, so somebody else doesn't come up?
Or both.
Or both, because I don't want now, now that we're willing to sell it, somebody who has an adj-
I think we should be even more precise. I think what we're saying that we wanna consider is selling it to both. When I'm saying tonight, one or the other, we're saying-
Or the other, or both, but, right, just because I don't want now that to open up the gates where somebody else that comes in and says-
No, we're saying, these are the two applicants, and we're saying, you know-
Either or both.
Well, yeah, I know that. I, you're right.
Okay.
Adjacent owners. Alright, so you wanna, somebody wanna craft a motion?
So, I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one, to sell this parcel of land.
To consider selling.
Consider selling this parcel of land. To, do you want me to, to Paint Lux or Kaiser University?
No, to the two applicants.
To the two applicants.
When I'm saying one or the other, that's what I'm saying.
Right, well, one, that, because they could come back and say, you know what, right, but they could come back and go, you know what, we've already worked out an agreement, now just Paint Lux wants it. So I mean, once their conversation-
They can come back and say that.
But that's what I'm saying, so you worded as one, the other, or both.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Alright, that'll make you happy.
Makes sense to me. It makes sense to me. I'll second, I'll second.
Any other comments before we take the vote? No? Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or no opposed? Diane, please let the record show that was approved. You guys get together and get back to us soon as you can, so we could do what we need to do to move this thing down the tracks. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, regular item, agenda item number two is a public hearing for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1020, amending chapter nine. Fences, hedges, walls, and section, at section nine dash one, permit required for construction, permit fee, to add an exemption to the permit requirement for fence repairs or replacement, which is less than 25% of the permitted installation. And at section nine dash eight, residential zoning districts, to revise existing regulations to require certain fences installed in residential zoning districts to be constructed to present the finished side of the fence to the adjoining lot or any abutting right-of-way. Bradford, are you out there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Rob.
This is, uh, Rob's.
Bradford, when'd you get dreams in your office?
He does exist. Kinda like Santa, he does exist.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so we, uh, kinda briefly discussed this at the first reading. This, uh, pertains to fences that go beyond the front setback line. So this is front yard fences or fences that are adjacent to right-of-ways and can be seen from the front of the property. We're proposing, we're proposing that they have to have the finished side out. We're trying to get ahead of what we've seen in the, uh, our past experiences as neighborhoods start to mature and people start to kinda fence in their property a little more. We wanna make sure that they, uh, we still maintain the aesthetics of our village.
Okay, as I said, this was the second reading. Um, are you, are you finished, Rob?
Yes, that's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, public comment. Uh, any advanced public comments with us on this item?
No.
Ray, anyone with their hand up?
No, Mayor.
Alright, I have not received any public comment cards, and it's a general item, so I'm closing public comment, unless they have comments from members of council or motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item two.
Second.
And motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If no opposed, Diane, please let the record show, agenda item R2 is approved five zero. Uh, agenda item R3 is a public hearing for first reading and approval of ordinance number 1023, adopting an amendment to the village's comprehensive development plan. In accordance with the mandates set forth in section 163 dash 3184, Florida statutes to add and adopt a private property rights element. Keith, please explain this to us.
Last year, the Florida legislature passed a new law that requires all local governments to adopt and add to their comprehensive plans a, um, private property rights element. You know, your comp plan has land use and transportation and housing and all of those other elements. Now, everyone has to add a private property rights element, which recognizes, um, that property owners have certain rights to use their property, uh, and it, it, it provides, um, objectives, policies that, that indicate that private property rights will be considered in local decision-making, um, based upon physical possession of the property, how the property is used, um, the ability to, um, exclude others from property to protect against trespassing, how property can be sold and disposed of. Uh, we would, we have a, 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 a second policy that says all development applications will be made available for public review, uh, and all affected persons will be provided equal opportunity for participation in all public hearings regarding land use matters. So it, it, you know, it's very general terms, but we have to, everyone has to adopt this private property element into their comprehensive plan. Um, so this is before you for first reading to, uh, bring the village into conformance with that statutory requirement.
It's a statutory requirement, so we have to become, we have to conform.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a notion of what impact this will have on our procedural processes?
You know, a- as I said, and as you can see in, in the ordinance, you're talking about less than a page of text. It's really, um, 10,000-foot level language. It, 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 you know, we, we, we will, we will consider private property rights in our development applications. We will, um, make sure that neighbors and affected people have an opportunity to review applications and be part of the process. That, that's really what it says. So it's very general, I'm not sure that it's gonna have a big change.
And so therefore, we should do this, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before I take comments from council, um, Diane, do we have any prior comments?
No, Mayor, no comment.
No? Ray, anyone has their hand raised?
No, Mayor.
I have no comment cards submitted here on agenda item R3, so I'm closing public comment on that agenda item. And if there are no questions or comments from council, approve motion.
Approve regular agenda item number three. Second.
And motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R3 was approved five zero. Bring us to agenda item R4, which is appointment of one resident to the educational advisory board. Jeff, that would be you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to move, uh, the alternate Education Advisory Board member Denise Lawrence to a regular seat for the term expiring March 2023, and then to appoint Jennifer Sullivan, uh, the single applicant, uh, to the alternate seat with the term expiring March 2022.
Need a second?
Second.
Alright, we need a second.
Yes, sir, you do.
We have a, okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show, agenda item R4 was approved five zero. And that is it. Everybody have a wonderful, peaceful, blessed holidays. I will see you all next year, unless I run into you in the local pump or something like that. We stand adjourned.